We'll call to order the meeting of the Town of Sebastopol Board of Supervisors. For Monday, December 15th at 7:00. I'll ask that you rise and join with me in the Plaid of Allegiance.
Hi.
Plaid of Allegiance.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To establish a quorum, we'll have a roll call.
Supervisor, Richard Wyman.
Here.
Supervisor Chuck Tice.
Here.
Chairman Leo Zipperer.
Yes.
Supervisor Dan Woolfall.
Here.
And Supervisor John Stavonis.
Here.
We do have a quorum, we will proceed. The meet and greet is next, though we had so many people in our audience, that we'll probably... I think we all know each other. For the camera and for the visitors at home to enlighten your December Christmas, we'll start way down in the corner. Linda?
Linda Waite, Clerk Treasurer for the Town of Sebastopol.
Dick Wyman, Board Supervisor, 41-08, Country View Roads, Sebastopol. Chuck Tice, Supervisor, Bay Shore Drive.
Leo Zipperer, the Chairman on Bay Shore Drive.
Dan Woolfall, Town Supervisor, Park Road.
John Stavonis, Town Supervisor, Whitefish Bay Road.
All right, let's go to the Chief Deputy over there.
Deputy Short read, dark night, 14 years.
Okay.
Retini, Town Building Inspector.
Watch this antique coming up here.
Maddie Chapman, Sebastopol.
(laughing) Oh, boy. Public participation is next. There anything, any items not on tonight's agenda you might want to speak about or to? Hearing none?
No.
You're not a public, go ahead.
I was just wondering if now was the opportunity to ask Deputy Short read a few questions.
Okay, go ahead. That's why he's here, so he can get all the answers.
I have actually three questions. And the traffic that stopped out in front of school, like in the morning, so I'm heading, yeah, towards the town hall here. So naturally, traffic just stopped waiting to turn into the school parking lot, so that's the traffic heading north, until the traffic heading north. Is it legal to pass on the right side even though there's no formal shoulder there?
Not being a turtling there, I believe if it's paved.
It is paved, it is paved.
Then it's legal.
Okay. And construction vehicles parked, like in a lane of traffic, I know there was an accident not too far from my house on County HH, not this fall, where a construction or highway construction vehicle and trailer is parked in the lane of traffic with the orange triangles. They're allowed to do that as long as it's flagged?
Correct.
Okay. And one more, is the Sheriff's Department obligated to respond to a 911 call? Like if somebody calls, oh, I dialed it by mistake, are you obligated to go out to that residence and check it out to make sure everyone is safe?
Yes, we still go out and check it out. The only ones we don't is if we get some from phone, or from old phones or whatever, that we can't pin the location, we're best to check the area up there.
Okay. Those are just some questions that have come up in the office here, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The agenda properly noticed?
Yes, it has been.
Need a motion then to adopt?
We adopt the agenda for December 15th, 2014.
We do have a motion and a second, I don't have anything to add. We were supposed to receive something, a correspondence letter, it did not arrive, so we'll talk about, a little bit about it, and then hopefully we'll have some kind of letter in the future.
All in favor?
I'm sorry?
All in favor?
I am. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Approval of the minutes, November 17, 2014?
We approve the December, or the November 17, 2014 minutes?
I'll second that.
Some of the finest crafted minutes you'll ever want to see. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Financial reports, part of your packet. The fund balances, the budget versus actual. And the transition list by the date. Meets your approval, we'll just move on. Hearing no opposition, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Oral Committee reports, committee minutes, do we have any? Tucked in?
Just Tourism Zone Commission, we've got the minutes here, if everybody read them. One thing to stay up on, we'll be looking for possible changes in our ordinance, probably come spring. Part of it is to help in the collections process and the permitting, make things a little bit easier. We have to do some changing, and one thing we don't have is a way to become unpermitted or to turn in your permit. People turn in their permits at the end and say they're done, they're not going to rent, but they don't stop advertising, and we find out down the road that they're still renting. So we need to put some type of a policy together, then what's going to happen and what they have to do in order to relinquish that permit. There is a little scuttle going on right now. A town up north wishes to increase the tax to its maximum to benefit the municipal coffers. There's, doesn't look like it's going to fly on the commission's part though, because it wasn't the Tourism Zone Commission's intent to collect monies to, for the town's general funds, it was dollars to promote tourism for the county. Majority at this point are not in favor of raising that tax, but it is out there. Actually, the innkeepers are being singled out as one business that, you know, no other businesses are, you know, subject to that kind of a tax, other than that. The thing is, the business is not subject to the tax, the person renting is. The business has to collect that tax, and there is an expense in it if you use a credit card and so forth. There is some paperwork that needs to be filled out. It is the feeling that the innkeeper is being taxed because they feel that this tax causes their rooms to cost more, so they don't have the ability to raise the price of the room for their benefit.
Right.
And the fact that taverns are making money off these tourists, grocery stores, gas stations, and they're not having to do anything to help collect or attract these people to the town, or the county, so.
What is the maximum tax that they wanted to raise it to? It's at 5.5 now, right?
We're at 5.5, I believe the maximum is 17.5.
Wow.
We're not Chicago.
Yeah.
Yeah. Next interesting, 17.
Okay, the other written correspondence minutes were from property management, October 14. And we had ad hoc committee of the Dora County Tourism Zone, November 7. And Tourism Zone Commission Executive Committee of October 16. Accept them and place them on file. License and permits. Independent Inspection Limited with a note that the zoning permits were not available for the month. Any business, Shower Road and Project Recap? Linda, you were most involved in this, you want to handle it?
Yeah, I think we're all done with Shower Road in its entirety. We started this project back in 2010, I believe it was initiated by the DNR to do some improvements to Shower Road, making it a little bit wider, safer, better for vehicles and pedestrians. So we started in 2010 to 2012, where we did .63 miles from North Cave Point Drive to Cave Point County Park, and we had contributions toward that project. And then earlier this year, we started on the remaining .47 miles from Cave Point County Park to the Jacksonport Boundary. So that has all been accomplished now, and I'm expecting the contribution from the DNR to arrive shortly. They had indicated they would cost share at a 50.4 percent slash 49.6 percent cost of the project, so all is done.
So it's a good idea that we did have a multiple governmental agency participation in lessening the costs all the way through?
We could probably place on the record, thank you to Wisconsin DNR for its contributions. Thank you to the Dora County Parks and Airport Department, they contributed on both sections. Wisconsin LRIP project contributed on the last portion, and of course, the Town of Sebastopol.
No questions or comments, we'll move on to the street lighting. Location and the replacement of the fixtures, we had it from last time around on a note from Jason Berry from the SBU. So the information provided by the clerk indicates the fixtures by SBU and also WPS. And gives you the lumens, the location and the cost per fixture. I think the encouragement was to not keep replacing the old lights, but if they do come down, it might be a good idea to replace them with the, are they the LEDs or?
Jason was in here on Friday afternoon. There are two examples of the new LED fixtures right on the table there with a, he provided a short explanation. Right now, we use 150 watt high-pressure sodium fixtures. We own the nine fixtures that we have with Sturgeon Bay Utilities. Replacing bulbs is around $15, replacing electric eyes is around $8. Our average bill runs around $79 to $80 a month right now for each, for all nine fixtures. Total for nine fixtures, $80 a month. The large round LED fixture on the table there is a 73 watt. It's equivalent to a 150 watt regular bulb. It uses one half of the electricity, as does our current fixtures, so our bill could actually be cut in half should we decide to go with something like that. On the fixture itself, there's a six-month to one-year warranty, same as our current fixtures, but the bulbs are supposed to last 10 to 15 years. Not guaranteed, but they're supposed to last that long. So over the long term, there would be some payback there. The round one gives a large round downward pattern. That fixture would cost about $185, including the bulb. SBU would change them out at no extra charge. The elongated fixture is more of an intersection light. There are, Jason's going to let us know a few locations in Sturgeon Bay. I noticed one the other night near Texas Street, they are very, very bright, very bright. But that elongated one would be more for an intersection type use. It's a 91 LED, obviously more light. That fixture runs between $235 and $240. Again, the bulb is supposed to last 10 to 15 years. That one is more, would cost more to operate, obviously because it's higher watt. So Jason, you know, if we wanted to replace our fixtures as they're damaged or as our bulbs burn out, do we want to replace that fixture as we go along? The current sodium bulbs will be still available, they do plan to keep stocking those. So something for the board to consider as fixtures, like I said, are damaged or burned out, do we want to think about going with the LED and, over the long term, save some money?
Linda, do you have any idea what WPS does with their fixtures? Do we buy those, or do we pay them a fee and they just put them up? I think that's what we do, don't they?
I'm not sure that we own WPS fixtures. I don't, I do not ever receive, remember getting a bill for replacing bulbs or anything. At least I don't remember it.
Well, I think if your numbers are, if I, if I got this right, your numbers are like $500 to $600, $500 to $600 a month for the WPS fixtures?
And I'm not sure that WPS is even offering the LED fixtures at this point.
That's what I was wondering, because I mean, that would make sense.
I haven't been approached by anyone.
We do have seven lights in Bellamy, so we got enough lights down there.
So are we looking to take some out, or what did this all come from?
Replace them.
Just replace them?
Obviously, they're pushing the LEDs, they last longer, they're cheaper to operate, and he feels, you know, they give a more, more light to the area. Maybe they give too much light, I don't know. Like I said, the ones in Sturgeon Bay were pretty bright.
On page one here, I'm not sure, this must be WPS.
Yeah.
It says that it costs $560 a month in the summertime and $530 in the winter. I would think in the wintertime, they're on a lot more than the summertime.
Yeah, you would think.
That doesn't make sense.
Right.
But that's WPS then, right?
Excludes purpose.
That's what they charge us for?
Well, I don't think, we do not light Cave Point Dock in the winter. I'm pretty sure that one's shut off.
So they, they actually?
But we do light Town Line.
Yeah.
Yeah, but why don't you light it in the wintertime? There's ice fishermen that go out there.
At, I'm sorry, at Whitefish Bay?
Whitefish Bay?
At Whitefish Bay.
Oh, Whitefish Bay.
I said Cave Point, I'm sorry, Whitefish Bay.
If they did, they wouldn't come back. She said Cave Point, Whitefish Bay.
Okay, yeah, they don't go out there at Whitefish Bay.
That's probably the difference there, John.
Okay.
Okay, is there some direction we need to give to the clerk? She gets all the calls on them anyway when they're burned out.
Unless you just want to wait until Jason provides me with a list of several intersections or areas, and the board members can check it out and see what kind of light we're talking about.
Okay.
I think the only other thing would be to see if, if WPS offers an LED fixture, if we're spending $600 a month and we can cut that in half, that could conceivably, that would pay back in a reasonable timeframe, the cities, and there's not enough outflow to, you know, the payback's got to be about 10 years on one light fixture.
I could certainly check with somebody at WPS.
Probably nine and a half, because they'll last 10 to 15.
Yeah, that's true.
You could probably cut back on a couple of lights down the main street here, too. When you look, we're like 350 feet apart with the lights we have today. You put the new LED light in, you could replace or eliminate every other one.
I don't think we should take any lights away.
Take any out?
No.
We've got about 40, we have 47 total. I guess it just depends upon where you're located.
But you look at 570 feet north of the intersection of P and 57, that's on the north end of Institute.
Right.
You've got one 350 feet south of Institute, of that intersection.
A Pete's Road.
You've got another one at the intersection.
But there's a lot of traffic walking across the road in that area.
Then you've got one down here by the school.
Yeah.
What I'm saying, the lights we have today are the smaller ones. If you put the new bigger ones in, they would give more light.
Right, I agree.
But they're, they're not a substitute, I mean, they don't illuminate the surface to the effect of aiding a driver driving down the road at night. I mean, they're, sometimes I wonder just, you know, what their purpose. I could see them at intersections and that sort of thing, but... So you can find your favorite park. Oh, okay. But I mean, I just don't see them as a aid, a driving aid to illuminate, it's like the bridge lights.
Well, if it's pitch dark there and you have somebody walking, wearing, because they're not always in the right frame of mind and they're wearing dark clothes and they walk out.
I could see in school, I mean, around the school.
If at night you have a little bit of light, you might see a shadow and hit your brakes, too.
Mm-hmm. I mean, we do have quite a few lights in, yeah.
I could also check with some of the other towns and see how many lights they have.
Lights they have?
I think they serve a purpose. I agree with Mr. Stavonis that they do help as far as safety, especially in when people are wearing dark clothing.
And walking down the side of the road.
Yes.
They're supposed to aid the Sheriff's Department. When they're chasing people, they run towards the streetlight and stop so that they feel safe. If we eliminate all the lights, then you wouldn't stop anybody in our town, right?
You work, you work the evening shifts, do you like the lights?
I do like the lights, especially, you know, by the moon and through the school. Come 4 o'clock, they'll start, so it's...
Right.
According to that's the light that the school is next to.
And we, the school has a considerable number of security lights, and we've had situations where they're justified having them.
Okay, if you read the information from Jason Berry, indicates that he would not recommend that we do any outright purchases now, especially if the lights are still working however down the road at peace. If we needed to do that, we could come up with replacements as they go. Okay, until we get better acquainted with our problem, let's go on to 2015 meeting schedule. Are we all okay on these dates?
The only date that I have an issue with is the February 16.
Did you have a different date?
Following week.
23?
Mm-hmm. To the best of my knowledge. I get back on, I'm supposed to be back on the 15th in the evening, so... I don't know if I want to take a risk at trying to do a meeting on the 16th unless you're doing the agenda, because I wouldn't have a third week.
Anybody have a problem with moving that one to 23, February?
No.
Linda?
I might.
Oh, okay.
Right in the middle of verification.
I think I might be babysitting that weekend, but I can't remember.
Bring the baby on?
I can't remember.
What's the 30th? Well, there is no 30th.
There is no 30th.
Okay, we'll move that one to 23 and...
If we had to move it back a couple days to a Wednesday, the 18th or something, I mean, I wouldn't have any trouble with that. I just want to make sure that I'm back.
Wednesday is Ash Wednesday, you'd have a problem.
Well, whatever, Dave. We can adjust it on the fly.
February 23rd for now?
Sure. New business, Independent Inspections Limited. Brett Timmy wants to get paid, and he wants to get paid with a lot.
Was that in the contract? I didn't see that, let me look.
Okay, did you want to speak on this Brett, or not, or?
Our contract renewal is, annual contract renewal expires the end of January, and as such, we submitted a contract agreement for 2015. The fees and contract terms are exactly the same as the previous year, so there are changes to the contract.
Is there a reason why we're doing January 31 versus the calendar year? Is that your fiscal, okay?
Did that start out from a few years back?
Oh, that could be.
Can we extend it one year, Leo? Can we roll it one year while we're evaluating it? I think that might have been part of it. I mean, I'd certainly approve it with a 50% decrease, I mean, you know, but not now.
Okay, everyone had an opportunity to go through it?
Yes.
Need a motion then to approve?
Well, did we approve the Independent Inspections Limited contract? January 31st, 2015 through February 1, 2015, or January 31, 16.
I'll second that.
Questions are coming. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cable program, thanks for showing up. The program director and videographer agreements, renewal of services. I'm sure this is coming in full force with the approval of the entire PEG channel board.
Entire committee has the support of the budgeted contract that we agreed on previously. Would ask for approval.
This the only one we had that November?
No, we haven't. As far as I know, there hasn't been any changes made to the agreement part of the contract as far as fees for recordings that are done and that sort of thing, that's remained constant?
We do the same one every year. I hear we have a more recent one on the file, but the numbers haven't changed.
Okay.
At least the numbers on here haven't changed.
And the...
Well, I think if I, in the independent contract, the month per month has changed every year.
Over the years, except this year it's not.
No, no. This year it's not. $567 per month.
Plus, we added on a $50 a month of...
Assistant?
Internet...
Oh, right.
Assistance, which is not in here, but it's in the budget.
Oh, that's right, that's not under the...
We never updated this agreement, but it is in the budget.
And the monthly fees, the director?
Per, per the 2015 budget, the monthly program director fee remained the same.
Right.
$567.
Right, but the previous year, we started complicating the $50...
$50 per month internet, right, as a reimbursement.
Reimbursement, okay.
That is not included in this agreement, that's sort of on the side.
How much does the total cable cost? You don't watch any other TV but the PEG channel?
Well, that $50 fee is not for the TV, it's for the internet use of the internet, because I have to send a large amount of data back and forth from the town hall to my location.
I see.
And I have to download a lot of that data from other sources, and that's a huge amount of data. Charter claims I'm exceeding their limits by a factor of two or three, but we kind of reached an agreement that they wouldn't complain as much anymore.
And I had one other question, it says, for the videographer, you get $75 per event, per session, right?
Yeah, like I said, would be one event, one session.
Right, and then your helper gets $50 per session, and then the sessions are defined as two hours.
We've never actually invoked that counter business.
Now, is that for you two, if it goes over two hours, you get another $75?
No, I wouldn't. I think that was intended to compensate a helper if we had a long session. We've never actually invoked that. The few times I've had someone settle it for me, I've just paid him what I would normally get, whatever that might be.
Okay.
Yeah, the flat, it's stated as a flat fee of seventy-five dollars for each session. And also that the assistant would pay fifty dollars per session.
Right, but then in the-
Stating that it's no longer than two hours.
In the middle of that paragraph, it says a single session is defined as being no longer than two hours. So I guess my question is, what happens after the two hours?
Well, since we never invoked it, it seems like a vote point. Uh, the intention of the assistant-
No, this is a contract. We gotta have clarity.
We're not making any, uh, there's nothing indicated in there, the additional payment will be made over two hours.
I guess the idea was just to, uh, prevent it from being open-ended.
So if you stay for four hours, there's entertainment value on your part.
Twice as much entertainment value.
There we go.
Johnny, and I, and I think the assistant was more of a, an interviewer or someone, uh, not necessarily someone carrying a camera bag. Although I guess it could be interpreted that way.
Well, no, I, I agree with, you know, paying your assistants and everything, but I just don't like the, the single session being two hours, because there could be something that runs over two hours and then, then what? You know, that isn't clear at all there. And this is supposed to be a contract.
You're right. We could agree with that. Some other time.
Before it's signed.
You're looking for something that spells it out a little bit more?
More clear, yes.
I mean, there's, there, there isn't a dollar or any monetary value given to being over two hours. So- It might be discretionary, I think.
You just ended right at two hours.
We don't hand this out to the public anyhow.
We charge it.
Well, you know-
Yeah, this, this-
If somebody comes in to be an assistant or anything, they don't get a copy of this, so they don't know how they're paid.
No.
And it, and everybody should be reminded that this comes out of the franchise fee that Charter pays to Svastipool, town of Svastipool, so.
We have a problem with the billing, John. I'll, I'll look over the chairman, the paper committee chairman.
Okay.
Where the money comes from is irrelevant. It's gotta be a budgeted item. You're limited to a, a budget. So, you know, that's...
I think you could fix John's problem just by taking out the, the sentence, a single session is defined by being no longer than two hours.
Correct.
Just scratch, scratch that.
Take that right out of there.
Right.
Would that be, would you be in agreement?
Yeah, because you never use it anyway.
Okay. We can, we can-
And then add the the fifty dollar internet.
It would be good if they-
Along.
That's a reimbursement.
It's a reimbursement, but-
So that's almost a penny what, uh, Charter charges me for internet service at home.
I mean, yeah, if, I mean, if the service increases, I don't think we want a dollar amount in the contract per se. I think we want to keep it as a reimbursement. If, if, if the fee goes down.
Well, yeah, he could transfer more data and go over his limit and then they would charge him more, so.
Yeah, so I mean-
If it's a, if it's a flat reimbursement, then it would be whatever his costs.
Yeah, I don't think we want that as a contract item.
Is there any way you could, uh, clean this up and then bring it back for next month?
No.
Sure.
And have it, uh, two independents. One would be for the videographers agreement. And then the other as a contractor agreement.
Perhaps-
With the proper dollar amounts to the sign.
Perhaps instead of doing extensions like we have been for the last few years, we could just renegotiate the agreements themselves.
Okay.
Would that be easier?
Sure.
Well, Richard, with nothing else to do in the wintertime, you could probably have a meeting.
Uh, we, we, we can do that. I'll make note of that, Mr. Trevor.
So you will have a meeting to go over the agreements and-
To go over the contract and bring them back to, uh, board for approval.
Very good. Did you want to act on anything tonight, or? Nope.
Um-
He's still being paid.
Well, it's January first is the new one.
We, um, we probably should.
Do we have a one-month extension on this one?
Right, um... It would be good, yeah, to act on the extension of the independent agreement for the five hundred and sixty-seven dollars per month, uh, since we won't be meeting again till middle of January. I would request that we act on this, the agreement for the five hundred and sixty-seven dollars per month.
And then you're going to be back with the revised addition?
Revised, uh-
Very well.
For the agreement part of the contract.
I would make a motion that we extend this agreement till, what is it, January thirty-first?
Well, we have a motion already.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. Questions or comments?
It's an extension of the entire contract?
For one month.
Contractors-
The agreement and the independent contractor agreement?
Let's, uh, make it the independent contractor agreement and leave off the video, videog, videographers agreement?
Okay, questions are coming. Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's carried. Now, the clerk treasurer employment agreement. Before you, as the period, January one, two thousand and fifteen through December thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen. And the particulars on time off, personal holidays and administered by Norah Sickley, incorporated with the salary and compensation on page number two. Questions or comments? Should we be going for a two-year extension on this one?
Extended contracts.
If we go for two years, maybe she'll stay for two years, right?
Maybe seven would be in order.
The second, the second year would have a humongous raise.
Oh, it would?
Yes.
Yeah.
Seven years.
I know she's been going to night school to become a building inspector and that should not make Brett uncomfortable, but...
She would turn the race down.
Okay, I need a motion then to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve.
January one through December thirty-one.
I'll second that.
Have it correct.
You have a motion and a second?
Yep.
John's got the second.
Okay. All in favor, signify as say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the requirement is that we all get to sign the front page.
I've got several original documents here that I'll just pass down for your signature when the meeting's over.
Okay, the next would be, I think, uh, engagement letter for two thousand and fourteen. Audit and financial statement. And you will see on page number five, we actually have a live person who signed it in the agreement.
No, a shareholder. A shareholder.
This is, uh... It says you're going to do that for the end of December two thousand and fourteen. And... Are you happy with the company, Linda?
I'm very happy with the company. Sometimes I get a little surprised by the billing for that follow-up when they do have one of their, um, Quickbook experts come in and they do some adjusting to year-end entries. Sometimes I think that's a little too high, especially when we share her with the town of Ag Harbor as far as mileage goes, but I think we get our money's worth throughout the year on helpful hints and things like that. I enjoy working with, um, Mike Connecty and Janine. I think they do a good job. They're familiar with what's going on in our town. The financial statements are easy to read.
Well, I would be willing to make a motion to approve this.
Hey, be wonderful.
Second it.
Where's the dollar amount? I don't see that.
There is no dollar amount.
Based on all, timing and materials.
Okay. All right.
How much now?
We've been running around-
Sixty dollars now.
Um... I want to say it's like... Yeah, we've been running around, we had budgeted sixty-five hundred dollars for this year and actual costs were sixty-seven, seventy. So again, that two or three hundred dollars at the end of the year, that comes in about May to just make those adjusting entries, but I usually check with him at the end of the year to see if it's going to be a huge increase or anything. Usually about the same.
Very well. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the appointment of Board of Canvassers, the appointments are by the town clerk treasurer. Basically an FYI, is that correct?
That's correct. With the extension that, uh, as long as your ballot is postmarked by election day and it is received by four PM on Friday, that's when the Board of Canvas gets together at four o'clock on Friday afternoon to count those votes. I came in.
Did you want to enlighten the rest of the people here that you are participating in an audit?
The audit, right, um, Sandy Kreuter, our chief inspector of elections, and myself, on, uh, December third and fourth, we conducted the audit where we had to manually count all of our ballots and compare them to the tapes. So one thousand six hundred and seventy-two ballots by hand.
Mary Burke won?
No, she did not. I'm sorry. Um, so we were very happy with that because out of three out of the four races that we had to audit came in perfect. But we were off by three in the Attorney General's race. Recounted, recounted, you know, both of us, I think, counted every ballot three times. Could not find it, but I thought, oh, well, that's a pretty good percentage, you know, three votes out of seventeen hundred is point zero 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 one, two percent or something like that. So I sent that off to the Elections Board, our results and our tallies and all that, and a few days later, I got an email from the Elections Board saying that was not acceptable. We had to go get the ballots and we had to go through them again. And I'm thinking, okay, did the machine read a speck of dust or a pinpoint that for some reason we with our naked eye could not see? And he said, no, that's not a logical explanation. Go through the ballots again and find it. And so I picked up the ballots and, uh, we spent a morning, sorted them, we sort them into piles of one hundred, twenty, twenty, twenty stacks in piles of one hundred and then count from there. And by eleven o'clock, we were right on. So I think after two days of looking at ovals and checkmarks and races that, you know, we were just maybe too, our mind was too boggled down or something, but we found it right away, so our audit is perfect. I sent it off this afternoon.
Thank goodness.
Yep, mhm. So the machines are working perfectly. Now, it's kind of a shame because we are considering new machines for next year.
And they will work.
Yeah. Are, the, the totals from the machines, and you know, we have the optical scan where you slide your ballot in and then we have the touchscreen where you can do it, you know, by finger touch. So the totals from those machines had to equal our hand count, our hand tally. And they did, so all is well.
Very good.
There you go.
The implements of husbandry, the ag vehicles, the policy should be handed out at your desk this evening. It's a compilation of the requirements to be in compliance with Act three seventy-seven, Wisconsin, two thousand and thirteen. And basically, I highlighted the information on the first page as to the single axle limits and the gross at ninety-two thousand pounds. The no-fee permit application, so long as it's, uh, submitted on forms created by the Department of Transportation. And speaks to the category B vehicles who must apply for permits to exceed ninety-two thousand. And by the town adopting option F, the twenty-three ninety-two thousand pound would apply to all vehicles with the exception of those in category B. And we would permit and designate routes for those in category three. It sounds really confusing at best. But if you go through the attachments, let me follow this one first. All permits requesting would be submitted to the clerk for processing. And the authorization for approval or denial uh, can be made by a member of the town board or, uh, the town clerk.
A member.
This policy will sunset on January first, two thousand and twenty, unless options of two thousand and thirteen Wisconsin Act three seventy-seven are rescinded in part or it's in entirety prior to such date. The attached inform, information is revised, and that is not an error, that is particularly what they're talking about. Seven dot two-four dot two dot fourteen will give everybody a pretty good indication of what happens. So the definitions, dimensions and measurements along with the rules and regulations are there for guidance and clarification. And the more you read this, the more confusing it becomes. And glad to see the law enforcement people are adapted to all this and they can do the enforcement for us. So, uh, it'll be an operation, uh, a learning operation all the way through. We're basically going to tag on to the Door County Highway Department. And in particular, I learned today that at least six, uh, or seven, we would be number eight, I guess, of the, um, number of towns all adopting, uh, option F. And we would be in compliance as well with the County of Door. Uh, further extending that to include them, so... If you need any more information, I think the very last page indicates that they're not on the permit itself, but for further information, there's a number to call. And they'll talk your head off for a long time if you'd like to do that. Anyway, for those that have attended some of these classes, you know that it's a, uh, a long time coming and we don't know how long it's going to live. But the great possibility does exist that some of these will be coming back for further revision. So this would be the implements of husbandry and definitions to show you what a commercial motor vehicle is. The lighting and marking requirements, the width, height, length and other changes and the... Some of these things don't get into effect immediately. However, down the road a piece, they'll become part of the group.
Whose responsibility is it to inform the operators of the implements? Whose responsibility is it to inform the operators of the implements of husbandry about the regulation?
The officer that pulls them over to give them the ticket.
Well, it's my understanding that the Farm Bureau is involved in these requirements. And as well, was it the agit, Chuck, was it agriculture?
Agriculture, ag. Wisconsin Department of Ag.
Yeah, they would be making all this available to them. It was not done in spite of the farmers, but it was with their cooperation.
Hopefully, they're aware of it.
Yeah, and the clerk was at our session in Kewaunee as well.
Dale Congo from Soil and Water was also at that informational session that John Colagi sponsored.
Yeah, right.
And he did, did indicate that the farmers are aware of the limits and if they want to exceed, they will need a permit.
Yes, we will.
So the animal-drawn vehicle has to have one white lamp visible from the front? So the horses and the cows have to have lights on them?
Yeah, you gotta put it on their horns.
Okay.
Horse and a bucket.
Okay, so, uh, we need to make this, we needed to pass it today because it has to be effective January fifteen, two thousand fifteen. The lighting situation is not going to affect until November.
That's real confusing, too. If it was before nineteen eighty-four, they can get away with a lot more. But if it's after, so you have to have registrations on all these trailers and vehicles and can't we just make something simple?
Well, I tell you what, you could be our source of information if you.
First old inspections.
Yeah.
Do we adopt the policy governing the implements of husbandry and ag C M B operation on roads within the town of Sebastopol effective January fifteenth, two thousand fifteen? Well said, I'd, I'd second that.
Hey, wonderful. Questions or comments? Bring them forward in the future. All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and赞成?
We need to look at our roads with bridges now and, and find alternate routes.
Those guys get the maps because they got it locked there.
Does this pretty much say?
Okay.
We can establish anything that's gonna be over ninety-two thousand pounds is what would be handled by these permits, and we could set the routes. We just had a bridge inspection done through the County of Door. And our only bridge that showed any kind of in need of help was Whitefish Creek down on Key Point.
Yep.
So it would be the north and south.
We did repair there a few years ago as well.
Right, but this is, again, the same way. It's the north end, south end, and in between the two culverts. Something we need to look at, but there, again, that's one of those projects we share class with the county. We'll take a look at that maybe on our
Road inspection.
Road inspection, we'll, we'll do that. Okay, we, we got, took care of that one. All right, the next one then is the Brigham property on East Townline Road. Do you remember?
I remember everything about that.
Well, we went down and ditched the area.
We had flooding down there, road flooding.
West Shore Road.
And the culvert flooding under north, under Townline to.
This would be on the south side of Townline Road.
Right.
And it was west of, West Shore and east of Verdun.
Right.
In order to relieve the water that was going across the road mid, mid-section anyway, the resolve was to remove that.
Yeah, small culvert, twelve-inch.
Driveway, and there was no culvert in it.
Yeah, there was.
Right, it was, it was assumed there was an abandoned driveway because it wasn't active driveway. It looked like it was never used. It was a rock, uh.
It was a filled-in ditch and it went right into the woods. There was no roadway, no driveway, no nothing. Yeah. There was no permit for it in the first place.
Right.
It had no culvert in it. It was causing the water back up. How much does he want for it's the question.
Who wants to sell the property?
So he did make, uh, contact with the clerk earlier this year indicating that he wanted to know who took it out. And I think I was on the phone when I admitted that I did.
Personally?
And we had the county do it at the same time they were down there doing the stretch on West Shore. Did you all have the exhibit?
Right.
So you can see where the, uh, where the property does lie. He was of the opinion that either we can replace the driveway at our expense or else we might be interested in acquiring the property.
He just happens to be a Realtor.
Yeah, on the Townline to be adjacent to the Townline launch, and then people could park in there.
How big a parcel was it?
Just smaller than, I think, point nine-nine-seven. No, that isn't right.
Yeah, the acreage is point nine-nine-seven. I don't know what the dimensions are.
That's not the acreage, that's the assessment ratio.
That's the assessment ratio.
If you look at the tax bill printout, it's one point two acres.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Under legal description.
Did you have an actual size, Linda, or not?
Oh, there it is.
Uh, let's see, commencing at the northeast corner. Yeah, it looks like it might be, uh, a hundred and fifty by three hundred, maybe a hundred and fifty by three hundred.
Well, one point two acres would be about sixty, uh, two, I guess we buy it in, it's all small.
Yeah, but then we'd have to fill it in.
About fifty thousand.
It has a assessed value of the land at fourteen thousand one hundred dollars. We don't know, or do we know what the zoning is there?
Um, at your desk, I did do a zoning printout. You'll see that about two-thirds of the property, that green is wetland. The greenish with the W is wetland.
So if, just out of conversation, um, obviously, the value of the property is less than that given that what wetland, but could you in fact make an offer to buy it with Jacksonport's participation?
It's on the wrong side of the road.
I know it's on the wrong side of the road, but it would become a shared parking lot for Clark Lake because there certainly is an issue there parking all the time. We've actually expanded the roadbed down there a little bit. I don't know how much is usable. I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, I mean, if it's designated wetland.
But there's a section in there that parallels the road that might be, I don't know how much that is, but if you could define that and it was enough to park eight, ten cars, maybe it wouldn't be such a bad effort.
Well, we might have to take a look to see what's allowable in the wetland. I don't know that we could fill in for a parking area.
No, but, but there might be enough land here, Leo, between Townline Line and where the designated area is that you could conceivably do that.
That would be a question we could pose to the zoning department to see what the buildable or parking lot setbacks could be.
Well, I'm with, uh, I'm with Chuck on this one. There was never a permit issued, a driveway permit issued. So the, uh, request that we reinstall the driveway with the culvert would be something that we would not agree to.
I think we should agree to let him buy a culvert at our, at our county at the normal price. I would suggest if he wishes to put the driveway back in, I mean, he can get the permit. It needs a culvert to put it in according to regulation. Not at our expense, though, and he's willing to sell. Like Dan says, let's look at the property, see if it's something we really want.
But in order to get a, um, buildable site there, we would probably have to call in somebody like Dan Vanderleest or, you know, Baldwin.
The county has the ability to designate wetland.
They can go in and check the soil and all that and designate it.
That was Kay, but she left.
That's right.
It's already been designated, yeah.
Well.
It's already flooded on here.
You could still just walk it. You'd just have to see how much is there. If there's.
Somebody has to designate what's built, what can be filled in, what can be, we can't just, we can't just walk and say, yeah, we can park there.
No, you could walk in there and you'd know in a couple of minutes whether it's even probable. That's all I'm saying. Walk in and see. If your feet are wet, I could forget it, you know, but if you walked in and it was thirty, forty feet.
Now your feet are gonna be wet anyways.
Yeah, maybe.
No, I think planning is already determined, that what is, what would be usable of that property. It designated as a wetland, we couldn't, I mean.
Oh, right, the wetland you can't touch.
Right.
Right. But the, the rest of it is yellow, so which is S F twenty, which is buildable, but.
I mean, I would only suggest we even look at it if in fact Jacksonport was interested in cost-sharing it because it certainly wouldn't be something I don't think we would want to undertake.
How much more than that fourteen thousand one hundred is he gonna want?
How much less?
That, that's a separate issue.
Yeah, I know.
We don't, I would, I would move to, we'd deny his request that the town of Sebastopol reinstate the driveway as per his, his request.
Okay, do we have a motion or a second time?
I'll second that.
Further questions or comments? Hearing that, all in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, my intention was to respond to it and maybe keep it on the front page, but yet tell them that we weren't gonna spend any of our money for it, unless he could come up with, uh, evidence of the fact that he had a permit issued at one time. But we didn't find anything. Linda did not find anything.
No. So, so our response to Attorney Deets, I assume you want me to put that in writing and not elaborate, elaborate on it and just say the board action, uh, the driveway will not be reinstated?
I'll try to pin a thanks but no thanks letter.
Okay.
You're dealing with an attorney here. You better make it very, 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 it's moving me all over.
There is another unhappy customer.
Approval of vouchers bills and claims, November eighteenth through December fifteenth. Oh, Dan, you got a whole bunch of signatures.
Move to approve vouchers, bills, and claims for November eighteenth through December fifteenth, two thousand fourteen.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing that, all in papers, say aye.
Aye.
On Friday, I got a phone call, this is, I'm an analyst under correspondence, in regard to the Door County Child Care Center going to abandon ship on December twenty-three. They found in their, um, I think it was on the deed or something along the line that the first option to repurchase fell to the town of Sebastopol. So they were going by letter to advise us of it, and then we would have sixty days in which to respond. So when I talked to the gal, she was going to make sure I had that letter. I told her we're meeting tonight. And she was gonna give me that letter before. And I checked my mail and my email and I had nothing. And so today at five o'clock.
Sixty-day option to buy the build the ground? Maybe I misunderstood what you said. We didn't catch.
No, it's a.
Is that the one right on the corner of Cherry and?
First.
That's correct.
The first option to purchase, yeah.
We have the first right of refusal.
That's correct.
Okay.
But I don't have the letter, so I'm just alerting you to the fact, and it'll need to come back next month anyway.
Should we get a roundabout in there?
I would think so.
I mean, the first one in Door County.
I think we should buy it then.
Okay, y'all had the correspondence. Are there any questions? Do we have any done with the first responder group there? One with, uh?
Well, it, it came out of the first responder budget to start with, didn't it?
What's, what, what are we talking about?
For the, the workers' compensation.
Right, we did budget for that. And we also get reimbursed from the County of Door up to, I believe we got twenty-one hundred or nineteen fifty. It's going to show up in this budget as a double payment only because we were not billed in the two thousand thirteen dash fourteen. So that caught up with us earlier this year. This payment now will be for two thousand fourteen dash fifteen. So we'll, we'll be back on schedule to the just one premium per year for first responders.
When, uh, we had our meeting, first part of the year, Justice said it came out of our, the first responders budget. Is that right?
It's definitely budgeted in the first responders. Yep.
Okay, and the other is from Charter. They're, they want your business so bad, they're gonna raise it from five to five twenty-five. Then the good news is the reimbursement for the period July one through September thirty is seven thousand seven eighty-four. And there is a notice for a lawn program, management, forest products.
A half a cent, a couple more trees.
And we have a new zoning director. And once he gets his feet wet, he'll be out and about for tell us all about it.
And maybe, um, Leo, under correspondence, I just touched base on this Clark Lake note. So everybody's on the same page. There was a note that came in from Bob Cuffrin, who's the head of the Clark Lake Association, asking Linda to have, make sure all the boards removed because high water's causing problems around Clark Lake. And in his note to her, he, and I copied me as well, he's also sending out an email to all the Clark Lake Association members telling them to contact the town regarding damages that was done to their structure or land. So, um, I sent Bob a note back, which I copied in the town in Leo on, which basically said that all the boards have been out for a number of weeks. We can't do anything. There's nothing additional that can be done to bring the water level down. It's coming down slowly, but there's nothing more that can happen. We can't take any more water under W D, and we can't get any more water out of Clark Lake. And he's under the impression there was a remaining board in place, but there are none. So I shared that with him and I asked him to let his association members know that so that everybody here didn't get a phone call saying, we have a problem that you should fix because there's, there is no fix. We've done what we can, so.
I move we control the rainfall from now on, pardon me, we control the rainfall on Clark Lake from now until.
We're going to divert the water coming in Logan's Creek by Mr. G's and fill his parking lot.
Hey.
There you go. Good play, actually. But anyway, just so you know, if you get a call.
Well, I guess apparently that the going down there and checking it themselves has stopped then, huh?
Maybe if they get wet feet then. Okay, the announcements, Property Management Committee meeting December seventeenth has been canceled. Christmas open house here Friday, December nineteen, four to six P M. Town folks are invited for holiday refreshments. And the beverage server is Linda with her own concoction. holiday refreshments. And the beverage server is Linda with her own concoction and pleasant conversation. I understand that Laddie is in charge of the sing-along. Is that right?
As far as I know, Santa has it on his agenda.
And I don't know how many of you people realize, but we do now have the piano that graces our community. And. That's right. We were going to have the tinkling of the national anthem tonight.
That's correct.
We forgot about that. Okay, the office will be closed holiday vacation, December 21, or 22 through January 2nd. Final date of file papers for the town board office is January 6. Door County Unit of Wisconsin Towns Association Group, January 12 in Bailey's. The next board, meeting for this board is January 19 at 7. So, do we have any items for the next agenda? We would have the property on Townline. Was there anything else?
Videoographer.
Videoographer.
Videoographer's agreement.
And that's it? Okay, and a showing of all the presents that Santa brought, right? Okay, motion would be in order to adjourn.
Hold it, we adjourn. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are.